Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the December 10, 2019 Board of Selectmen's Meeting. Can I have a roll call, please?
All five selectmen are present, as well as Town Council.
All right. Pledge of Allegiance. Let's see. Mr. Who? Yeah, Mr. Stanton. I think that's good. Please.
Thanks. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Stanton.
[inaudible]
All right. Announcements. Alan, please.
Give me a second. Too fast today. I'll just do one real quick one. We'll get back to the other stuff later. I'd like to thank everybody on the Village Association, everybody who participated in the Christmas parade Saturday. We had a bigger crowd than usual. We had a lot more vehicles than we've had in prior years. And since we weren't allowed to throw candy at people and had a hand or two, it took an extra long time. So we were a little slow. So next year, I think I'm going to the front of the line.
We had a lot of candy this time.
Because I guess I'm slow for everybody else.
Well, we'll have to put you in a front row. So when you fall back, you'll be just about hitting us.
Yeah.
Yeah. Actually, Chief Walczek was waiting for me at the end of the parade. And he indicated that next year, he thought it would be more productive if we went first. So the color guard wasn't marching 150 yards ahead of us and then trying to turn around and see what was going on because that makes... You know, people who march don't look backwards. Marching's all about going forward. And so that didn't work out so well. So next year, we'll be in the lead.
Yeah, they were in a mission from God. No way to keep up with that.
I tell you though, it was a lot... I must admit, though, it's a lot of fun. We're kind of getting used to it. It's kind of a lot of fun to do.
It is.
And this time, we made sure we weren't running out of candy. So last year, we kind of ran out towards the end there. But this year, it wasn't going to happen.
No, I got four bags that I'm going to put somewhere cool for next year to keep it...
Yeah, that's what happened. We spent $200 altogether.
All right. Anything else?
Um...
Nothing, ma'am.
Jim?
I do.
We have a... So we have you municipal waste meeting on Friday in Marion on Atlantis Ave.
Atlantis Ave?
That's it.
Okay. How about you, Peter?
Is that on?
I know that the town is looking for plow drivers. So if you're interested in plowing for the town, please get in touch with the Municipal Naintman's Department and get signed up for that. It's kind of funny. It's an issue not just in Wareham, but in a lot of places. I was talking about it with the chairman earlier. And he's telling me that back when he was 18 years old, which was many, many moons ago, he was getting paid 55 bucks an hour to plow. And, you know, I'm looking at the rates now, and they're not up appreciably from that. So, you know, this is an ongoing problem in many communities. I think Bourne's having the same problem, Plymouth. Every town I've heard about is having a hard time getting people to plow.
It's all over the state.
You know, in the old days, when we plowed, they used to... If you broke down and your plowed got damaged for one reason or another, they'd pull you in and they'd fix it. They'd weld it up, put you back on, send you back out. If you needed a cutting edge, they'd put one on and out you'd go. They don't do anything for the guys anymore. And it's gotten to the point where it's just not... It just doesn't work between insurance and everything else for the number of storms we're having. And there's just not enough people to go around. So it's just going to be the way it is. And people are going to have to realize that it's going to take longer to get your roads plowed. It's as simple as that. Everybody's going to have to understand that at home, that, you know, somebody may not be there as quick as you think they're going to be there. It's just as simple as that.
The other thing, too, is with regards to plowing, you know, a lot of people were concerned that with the snow that we got, the last little burst of snow we had, that, you know, certain streets weren't plowed. You know, our policy, and it's the policy, I think, of a lot of towns, is that typically we don't go out until three inches accumulation. So, you know, they will make exceptions sometimes when it's particularly icy. They'll go out and they'll try to salt and sand and do those things. But very often, the blade doesn't go down until there's three or more inches. So that's... You know, this has been the policy for a long, long time. Everybody, I think, the first snowfall, people forget that. And they see snow and they think everything's going to be plowed and everything else. You know, we all have to readjust, you know, after nine months of driving without snow. We all have to readjust to snow on the road. I mean, I drive a rear-wheel-drive convertible, and I manage to keep the car on the road. So if I can do it, you can do it. Just slow down, please.
All right. Citizens' participation. Anybody here to speak to us this evening? Okay. Next up, board comments.
Want me to?
Yeah, you want to run out to Congress?
Yeah, can I?
Yeah.
Yeah. Come on up.
I was going to, but he skipped over me, so.
Hi, Richard Swenson, Planning Board. I just want everyone to know that this Saturday at 10:00 a.m. in the Town Hall Auditorium, we're having a public workshop to discuss the Wareham Congress proposal. You all know what that is. I presented the same proposal to you two, three weeks ago. So this is part of my outreach. Just FYI, Thursday night, I'm doing a private... Not a private, but a... Another meeting with the chairpeople of the other boards I haven't been to yet. So this will complete the outreach and feedback session on this. So to the public, I really hope that you can come out. I'm doing everything I can to promote it. So thank you for the time.
Oh, okay. We'll have to rebuild these in the public session. She's going to have to make motions for that.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Anybody else? Thank you. All right. Board comments, please. Alan?
Nothing.
Jim?
Good.
Peter?
We've been invited, and also the Finance Committee, to the school budget hearing. This is something they do every year as part of their budgeting process. That's Thursday, I believe, at 7:00.
It is, 7:00.
And are they holding that in the middle school auditorium?
Yes, it's in the middle school auditorium. And I posted it as a meeting. So if anybody comes, we have a meeting. It's not a problem. I'll be there, anyway. I think Peter's going to be there. Mary's planning on coming, so we'll have a quorum anyway.
Yep.
So if you guys don't make it, it's fine.
Well, Alan's going to be on a big old jet airliner, so...
He's going to be jetting away to Nevada or something.
Yes, with the love of his life.
Did you see the look on his face? Oh, my God.
I'm going to thank all those remote participants.
Now, do you do that to participate or to escape?
Same.
All right.
And my toilet has extra volume out there.
Mary, you got anything?
No, I don't.
So does everybody in Wareham.
All right. Let's do appointments, please. Old Colony Elder Services Board of Directors. Ms. Dizik?
Yep. I move that we approve Ms. Dizik for a term to expire no later than June 30, 2020.
Second.
Motion made by Mary, seconded by Peter. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. Okay, Wareham Veterans Council? Come on down, Mr. Stanton. Okay, so this is the issue. Mr... He lives out of town, as you well know. And so we can't actually make you a member, but we can make you... We can make you...
Ex officio.
Ex officio.
Okay.
Okay? Which will make you part of the organization. And you can help out and do everything that you need to do. But technically, you won't have a voting authority. All right?
You won't be able to vote on motions and improvements and do things like that, but...
Only because it's not... You know, you're not a resident of the town. But we'd love to have you because, look, you did a great job on Veterans Day and everything. And you're a terrific man to have around. And you're here to support the community. And if you lived here, I'd put you on in two seconds. But I can make you ex officio.
I mean, he's a teacher in the school system.
Yeah, which is one of the reasons why we also can make you ex officio.
Our OTC program...
Yep.
What he's done for us, starting off with the wall when we brought it to Wareham...
I know, he's been incredible.
So, you know, it's...
That's not a problem for you.
I appreciate your support, and I'm going to continue to support it no matter what role I'm in.
You know, I'm guessing that they need somebody young. They need young people like yourself. And you can certainly help them through the process. And I'm sure that if they're going to ask you your opinion anyway, so...
Absolutely.
You know what I mean? So you're going to be a member, you're just not going to just be 100%.
I appreciate your time.
All right?
You want a motion?
Yes.
I move that we appoint Matthew Stanton as a member ex officio to the Wareham Veterans Council to a term to expire no later than...
June 30, 2022.
So moved? Yes.
Can we appoint him as a member or just...
Can't be a member because he's from out of town, but we can make him ex officio.
Well, Peter just said member. How do we rule it, Rich, so we don't have a problem?
Well, he just said ex officio.
Yeah. I think I said ex officio.
Yeah, but you said member.
Yeah, yeah. No, I didn't.
You did.
You have a hearing problem.
I don't.
I cross member...
Well, I'll tell you what.
No, you didn't hear it.
Okay. Let's... Do it again, please.
Okay. We'll draw what I said, make another motion. I move that we appoint Matthew Stanton to an... As an ex officio...
Person.
Person. Yeah, I'm trying to like...
To the Wareham Veterans Council.
To a term to expire no later than...
June 30, 2022.
All right. Motion made by Peter, seconded by Alan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much.
Thanks.
David McClure, where is he? Come on down, Dave. David wants to be on the Police Building Study Committee. Does anybody have any questions they'd like to... Why don't you introduce yourself first?
Okay. David McClure, been a resident here, been in town 30 years, a resident full-time for the last 10 years. Former police officer, 20 years as a part-time police officer in the town of Holden, central Massachusetts. Been EMT, ambulance qualified person for 35 years. So, and I'm professionally an educator. So I've had the experience of building a number of schools or renovating, which is even worse. Building is much easier. So I have a lot of background to bring to the committee. So I think I could be an asset. I've toured the current police station, which is a rather sad facility. And that's generous. I had the experience of being in a police station that was actually a three-decker. You may not know what those are, but that's what our building was. And we moved to a brand-new police station in 1979, and the town built a brand-new one in 19... 2010. So just like 40 years later, we built another police station because we didn't plan ahead. So the game plan is to, I would think, build a police station that looks at the foreseeable future, how many residents we're going to have in 30, 40 years, do a projection, and move ahead like that.
Awesome. Anybody have any questions? Alan?
No.
Jim?
No, and just thanks for replying.
No, you're welcome.
Peter?
Thanks for stepping up.
How long have you been here?
In this town?
Yeah.
I was an onset for like 20 years, and now I'm in West Wareham.
And we don't have you on any boards or committees or anything yet?
Well, you know, no. No, you don't. And this will be the only one, so I guess...
We got one. We're getting one so far.
It starts with one.
It always starts that way.
You're on the list now.
I came with advice from my wife, which is not really advice. This is what you're going to do. You can do it.
Could I have a motion, please?
I move that we approve Mr. David... Dr. David McClure to the Police Study Building... The Police Building Study Committee. That's it.
Okay. Motion made by Mary, seconded by Peter. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Yes, thanks for volunteering.
Appreciate it. Thanks for volunteering.
You're welcome.
All right. So next up is application for a one-day liquor license for the Wareham Oyster Festival, P.O. Box 904, East Wareham, Mass. 02538. Do we have somebody? Come on down.
We do.
And they're not just any somebodies.
And they're also going to use towns and roads, so we might as well do that at the same time, since you're here.
Thank you.
All right? Okay, so the only one thing that we don't have all the sign-offs on this, so it's going to have to be conditional?
What about insurance?
Excuse me?
Do they usually have an insurance document?
We actually have their insurance.
We typically get the insurance binder about a month before the event.
Yeah. And then they turn it in.
There's no point in paying for it now. We're a nonprofit organization.
So what we... Yeah, that's typically. And we...
We just hold it till we get...
We condition it anyway, you know? So it happens that way, so...
Same procedure.
Because, you know, it's expensive, that insurance. Very expensive. Liquor license insurance, man, I've got to be kidding. Okay, so does anybody have any questions of the gang here?
Tell us about the event all over again, not that we don't know.
This will be our seventh year. It will be essentially the same as it has been in previous years. One suggestion that the police department made last year was that we not allow dogs on the premises. So we won't... It'll be no dogs. But it starts with the road race, which benefits the Boys and Girls Club, and then continues into the festival itself, which starts at 11:00 in the morning on a Sunday morning, the Sunday of Memorial Day weekend, and concludes at 5:00.
I know it's been an awesome event. I always have a good time when I go there.
Hope for good weather.
Yeah.
Makes a big difference.
Because I like to eat, so...
Nobody would have known that.
That's true. I keep it secret. Anybody else have any questions?
No.
All right. Could I have a motion, please, to approve pending all final paperwork?
Yep. I move that we approve pending all final paperwork. The Oyster Festival's application for Sunday, May 24, 2020.
For a one-day liquor license.
For a one-day liquor license.
Okay. Motion made by Mary, seconded by Peter. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. Okay, let's do the use of town roads for the annual Oyster Festival. It's the same route that you always use?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Unless the police department has some recommendations for changes.
Well, that'll be up to... When you talk to them, you can work that all out.
We always meet with them.
Yeah, that's right. I mean, that's really... That's the whole deal.
The reason why we're here so early is so that we can promote the event and feel comfortable doing it.
Anybody got any questions?
I just... It would be nice if they had been processed through the appropriate departments for the sign-off and recommendations of what they wanted. It's just not... We seem to be doing this, approving things before having signatures and sign-offs. So it's not just this particular thing. I'm just making this statement at this point in time. That's all. Thanks.
All right. Any other... Anybody else? Alan?
I think one of the reasons this event's becoming a major, you know, event for the southeast area.
Sure is.
And when they go out to their vendors to come in, you know, vendors start to lock up things a year in advance. I just had a conversation with somebody else just recently about this. And, you know, if you today ask someone for an event like five months from now, there's a good chance they're going to say, "We already committed somewhere else."
Especially that weekend.
Yeah. And it's Memorial Day weekend. So it's important for this particular organization to get their... At least their dates locked in and approve from town that it's okay to use the dates. And then finish up with the rest. So as this event gets bigger and bigger, it's going to be that much early, we're going to have to approve it.
That's sort of happened with the food trucks a little bit, you know? And it still worked out okay. But they would have liked to have had a few more, you know? But I think they know now it's longer commitment times and stuff, so... All right. Could I have a motion, please?
I move that we approve the Wareham Oyster Festival's use of town roads for Sunday, May 24, 2020.
Pending sign-offs.
Pending sign-offs.
Any... Okay. Motion made by Mary, seconded by Peter. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. Thank you so much.
Thanks for all your hard work on this.
Thanks.
We know that this is probably the easiest of the things you do.
Have a good holiday, guys.
All right. Now we got a lot of renewals here. Now, I'd say we can run these... You can list these in groups. This is how we do this. So the first one is all alcoholics.
We have Wendy's.
We've got to do that. We've got somebody here, I think, from Wendy's.
Yes, we do.
She'd probably like to go home. Or back to Wendy's or wherever she's going, but...
Is somebody here from Wendy's?
Yeah.
Right here. Megan, right?
See, I checked it off, but we didn't do it.
Huh. Come on down.
Hello.
Hi.
Wendy's LLC for Common Vic. Oh, this is for the new restaurant.
Well, if you say so, we're opening tomorrow.
Guess what? If we sign this off tonight, you are.
That's the...
That's the plan, right?
That's the plan. So we'll see what we can do. See if we can get you off and running, all right? All right. So anybody have any questions?
No.
Anybody have any issues? Great.
Do you have any special motions?
Everybody's signed off, right?
Do you want to talk about?
I can't even...
Like, the last few days have just been crazy.
I bet.
Yeah, really, just like the two-for-five, the spicy chicken. It's the best thing we have.
Okay.
All right, so...
You've got everybody to sign off, right?
I have all my health inspections, CO, all that stuff.
Thank you.
Yep.
It's all good.
You look good here.
You making a point over there?
Everything's looking good?
Everything looks good.
All right. Could I have a motion, please?
I move that we approve the Common Vic license for the new Wendy's.
Second.
Motion made by Mary, seconded by Peter. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. 5-0-0. Thank you. Now you can open tomorrow.
You can pick up your license.
I think there was no doubt, but, you know...
This will be a...
This is my first time.
You never know.
This will be available in the Selectmen's Office tomorrow morning for you to grab.
Yeah. And you can post it right up, and you're all set.
Yep.
She'll fill it out for you, then.
I don't want to hold anybody up, but what are you talking about? I just moved here from North Carolina. I have no idea why.
Across the parking lot?
Across the parking lot is the Selectmen's Office, is upstairs on the third floor. Go in the Selectmen's Office. This will be sitting there, ready for you to pick up. You've got to post it.
Yes.
Post it.
You've got to stick it on the wall.
I promise I'm not a dingbat. I just said it.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
All right. Now, let's do the renewals. Now, do them like all... You can do like all the common ones, read the names and this stuff down, right? All the way down. Or actually, you can just say as written. Can't we say as written, Group B, as written?
As presented in the agenda.
As presented, okay?
All right.
And please, condition all of these in final sign-offs, just in case, okay? All right? So that we make sure.
Okay.
And I'll make sure, but I'm positive that this group has been signed off. But still, let's do it anyway.
All right. Am I doing this all in one? I can do it all in one?
So you can do like, say, Group B renewal of all... Read... It says renewal of the following year-round Common Vic all-alcoholic.
Okay.
As presented on the agenda.
As printed. As printed. And then say as printed, huh?
All right.
As printed on the agenda.
Right.
Okay, I move that we approve the renewal of the following year-round Common Vic licenses.
As printed in the...
As printed in the agenda.
Right. Those are these, these are the all, okay?
Subject to final sign-offs.
Sign-offs, I heard that. Did you hear that?
Yeah, I heard it.
I just said it.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. All right, you want to do the next ones?
I move that we renew the following year-round Common Vic wines and malt beverage licenses for the year 2020 as printed in the agenda.
Second.
Motion made by Mary, seconded...
Pending.
Final sign-offs.
Motion made by Mary, seconded by Peter. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. Next.
I move that we renew the following year-round club, all athletic beverages licenses for the year 2020 as printed in the agenda pending final sign-offs.
Motion made by Mary, seconded by Peter. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. 500.
I move that we approve the renewal of the following year-round inholder, all alcoholic beverage licenses for the year 2020 as printed in the agenda pending final sign-offs.
Second.
I hear a motion from Mary, seconded from Peter. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. Okay, good. Now...
I would make a suggestion that when we do this for next year, we get a system in place that's a little clearer.
It will be in place. It's, it's just, it's a little, a little lagging, because remember, this is a brand-new system for everybody.
I know, and they do it electronically, and they're responsible, but...
So, the, the, believe it or not, they're, at this point, they're still going into the offices and rewriting program a little bit and stuff to get everything to happen, so it's a little bit tough. And the other problem too is, is remember, we have, uh, a, a young lady who is really just getting up to speed, and she's got a lot of work to do, and it's difficult for her under the circumstances. She doesn't have anybody there to help her or anything like that.
Even in our office.
And, yes. And she's doing...
We've been helping her.
And just so you know, she's doing a terrific job.
Yeah, what it is, is that, you know, basically, she's actually had people come in and actually help them, because a lot of people, when they come in on this, they have to go online, and they immediately say, I don't know how to do it.
She's doing a terrific job.
Yes, she is.
Okay? Believe me, she is. And she's going to be terrific, because she's very good and meticulous about a lot of good stuff. So, she's going to be good, and she's going to be good for you guys, because she's really meticulous about stuff. All right.
And then get that other position filled and, um, kind of take a little, the burden off the shoulders.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's posted now, so they're working on it.
Yeah.
2020 ABC renewal certificate and the temporary increase of residential population per ABCC. You should have that in your file right there.
I do.
And I don't think there's anything in it. I think that nothing's changed. I think it should be pretty much blank.
Um, it is.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's the way it always is.
I move that we approve the 2020 ABCC renewal certification.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Mary, seconded by Peter. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. Temporarily increase of residency population, and I believe that's the same too, right?
Is that the 43.5?
Yeah.
44.
It's, it's, it says right on it.
44 now?
What's it say on it?
44? Temporary increase?
On this one?
44, yeah.
44,000.
Oh, you're going up 500.
Yeah, 44,000. Okay, motion, uh, made by Mary, seconded by Alan. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. Next up, 48-hour business. Does anybody have anything that, for 48-hour business? No. Mr. Town Council, nothing? Okay, next, rolling over. Town Administrators Report. The Town Administrator couldn't be here tonight. Liaison Reports. Alan.
Okay, this morning, I was in Taunton for the MVP Municipal Lullibility Program. Uh, just want to let people know that Wareham was early adopter of this program. We've finished one grant already. We're almost finished with a second, and we're about to apply for a third grant. We're doing extremely well with that. Council on Aging, uh, last Thursday, had their meeting, and they've already put together the survey, which is the first step on becoming an age-friendly community. Uh, there'll be, that survey's going to be vetted, and sometime after the first year, it'll start to get distributed out to take care of that. Serp Ed Commission, last Wednesday, I had Mrs. Clutchman, the Housing Choice Initiative Director, um, basically present at the Serp Ed Commission's monthly meeting, uh, explain the Housing Choice Initiative, the grant programs, et cetera, that are available. Wareham, at this time right now, is not a housing choice, you know, community as far as being approved yet, and, uh, Serp Ed is willing to step up and help any community who is not there to assist them in basically meeting that qualification, which allows for certain grants, et cetera, that we talked about.
That's all set.
So, we'll be working on that as well. Plymouth County Advisory Board, um, I met, uh, last week with them as well. We did some revisions on budgets.
This is the union stuff we voted on.
Are we all set and ready to go?
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, sir.
Sorry.
It's okay. Um, there's an interesting piece there that, after we get done, we were talking, and the Mass Municipal Association, uh, some time back, was against county government because of the way the patronage was, et cetera, and county government years ago. Uh, the county government is down to, I think, five or six counties as far as governments in the state now. Uh, Plymouth County, uh, is one of the best-run ones now, because these people are now elected, and they basically, there's no longer a patronage-type job, et cetera. So, I've already spoke to the Director of the MMA, and we're going to meet in January to talk about removing the language, which is very erroneous, you know, as far as, uh, actually, it says, not erroneous, but it's basically extremely negative toward county government. They basically had that years ago when they had those issues with the county governments being run very badly. So, I'm going to try and see, we get that language pulled out, and at least get a point where they maybe can at least work together or not, you know, instead of what it is right now. It's going to be interesting to see if I can make it happen. And, uh, that's enough.
That's enough?
Sure.
Okay, Jim?
Um, went to the Planning Board meeting last Thursday, I think it was. They're working on some changes in the site plan review, is it, for the spring town meeting, maybe? And, um, had our Affordable Housing Trust meeting this morning. We have actually a full board, which was kind of nice. Uh, Ms. Dizik, um...
This doesn't get signed.
Welcome her, uh, talked to, um, the people doing the 40B project. They're still looking for some funds. We haven't made a decision. We'll decide that next month. Um, it, it's, it's kind of nice having a board. It surprised, you know, we've got a lot on the plate for something that hasn't been busy for a while. And, um, something was brought to my attention on, on postings, and, uh, again, it's, it's with the Planning Board. I'm, I'm a liaison, and the agendas were changed drastically, and it was posted on the 9th,